Council will begin with item four, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Move to approve, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hurst is the second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Massey, any discussion on the motion? May I have your vote, please? That motion carries as in favor of Mr. Crisp, Mr. Bates, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shavani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler, in opposition, Ms. Applewhite and Mr. Hare. We'll move now to item 5.1, which is a motion to suspend city code, section 2.3D. Counselor, Ms. Davy?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend city code section 2-3 regarding reconsideration of the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million parks and recreation bonds, setting the public hearing and other related matters.
Second.
Have a motion and an appropriate second on the motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Crisp?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I guess my first question can be directed to Mr. Voorhees, sir. In regards to the agenda, I know that we first received a revised agenda that didn't, the first agenda didn't include this item earlier today, but then perhaps about, I guess, 3:30, 4:30, we received a revised agenda that included the suspension of the rules. So, my question is, since we had set, you know, the special meeting last Saturday, can I ask why we didn't get a revised agenda until perhaps an hour or two prior to this meeting, including this item?
Thank you, Ms. Applewhite. I think the point that I am trying to make is if this motion doesn't pass, then we can't move forward with anything else. So, it's really procedural to make it clear that we need a motion to suspend the rules or we cannot move forward.
I understand that. My question to you is, why was it present? Because quite frankly, we kind of expected this to come, but the initial agenda did not include it. My question is, why did we not get this revised agenda with the item to suspend the rules an hour or two before this meeting? That is my question. And who provided this item to you at such a late date or was it your doing?
In some discussion this afternoon on what needed to take place in this meeting, I made it clear that if we didn't pass this motion, we could not move forward. So, it was, it was, it was a suggestion that we actually place it on the agenda so we could dispose of it. If it were not placed on the agenda, it would just need to be, somebody would need to make that motion in order to move on to item 5.2.
It was discussed by whom? Is this your idea or was it someone else on this council?
That's my idea of that.
It's your idea to, is your idea to suspend the rules?
No, to merely make the point that if this does not take place, then we cannot move forward.
Has there been previous discussion about suspending the rules, other than just your earlier meetings that day?
My understanding is that council has had much discussion about that over the last several days.
What gave you that understanding? Because I, the question, the reason why I'm asking is, if you recall, the email that I sent on, I think it was Saturday night, I had a list of questions and they had not been responded to. On Monday, Ms. McDonald was the only one. I directed my questions to you and the mayor, and the only response that I got was from Ms. McDonald in regards to the rules for suspending something in our ordinance. So, there had not been discussion. There'd only been questions by me that had not been answered. But if I could ask you, with such a late date time for getting this, the page is absolutely blank. There's nothing about the relationship, or particularly the background, the issues, the options, the recommended action. And I did send an email back quickly when I saw this from Ms. McHale, asking why is it blank? Because this is a process we're not familiar with. Was this your idea to send it out blank?
Yes. Well, not to send it out blank, but to, to, to modify the agenda, to have a motion to suspend the rules be clearly stated, that that needs to take place or we cannot move forward. I didn't prepare this, the blank portion, that's just a, you know, your typical city council action memo, and I think that's generated by the system that has the motion. I did not have time to kind of fill out the impact, but I think the impact's pretty straightforward. Either we pass this motion and we go on with the agenda, or it does not pass, and then that's the end of the meeting.
Mr. Crisp?
I'm happy to answer. I don't want to take too long in the room. I do have room for Thanksgiving. My questions are now for Ms. McDonald. And you've been so kind in corresponding with me about suspending of the rules. Before we get to that, can you please talk speed to the fact of reconsideration of an item? What are the number of votes that need to reconsider an item based on our ordinance that's here in the city? Will we do that?
Requires three quarters vote, which is eight.
We, now, what, if we suspend the rules here today, particularly, would that change the amount of votes that?
Suspend the rules requires two-thirds vote, which is seven.
Okay. Now, subsequent, if that does pass, two-thirds votes, what would happen is that the initial motion of the bond order reading, then that would only require a simple majority? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So, what we're doing here is trying to make it relatively easier to pass the bond ordinance than if we went with a reconsideration that would require eight votes?
The same, the same number of votes are needed to pass the bond, to set the public hearing for the bond package.
Okay, sir. See, that's what I'm getting at, because we're all kind of confused with this. So, if we were to consider, reconsider this, we'd need eight votes, three-quarters, correct?
That would be the first motion.
That, if we were going to reconsider, but now we're going to suspend the rules. In order to suspend the rules that would not require that eight, how many votes do we need?
Seven.
So, in essence, if we suspend the rules, we are potentially making it easier to pass the original motion and reading of the bond, because we're only going to make, be seven now versus eight?
I would agree with that statement.
We're making it easier, okay? Couple more questions. In terms of law, are our ordinance specific law or general law? Would you consider that?
You have a city code which speaks to specific items, and when those items are not, if I'm understanding your question, and then for, for procedural rules which are not addressed by your ordinance, then you refer back to the suggested rules of procedure by Professor Flinman Dell.
So, are our ordinance specific laws or general? Would they be specific versus general?
I guess you would say specific.
Okay. So, our ordinance, does anywhere in our ordinance say two-thirds votes that's required? Is that mentioned anywhere in our ordinance? But, because specifically, it does say three-four votes.
You don't have any procedural rules in your ordinance, though. That is correct.
So, where does, where's the two-thirds rule coming from?
That comes from Professor Dell's book, which he also had adopted, the Suggested Rules of Procedure for City Council.
So, we have adopted his rules?
Yes, that's a part of 2-4, I believe the last item in 2-4.
So, as we've shared throughout the day, I have to go out to a lot of people that would kind of help me understand this, because this is not a parliamentary procedure that we've done much on council, and no one, quite frankly, perhaps everyone else has been tutored on it, but I have not been tutored on it. I had to kind of study my own.
Okay, is there a question there, Mayor?
Yes, sir. You can do that in one second. What does Robert's Rules of Order say in regards to this? We share.
I go with, you all go with Robert's Rules of Order. You use your specific rules outlined in 2-3 and 4, and then the suggested rules of city council by Professor Flinman Dell.
So, so Robert Rules of Order is nothing that we follow for the most part? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I, I do have one more question. We want to move on, and perhaps others have, others have questions. I could read something into record. Usually, in regards to Robert's Rules of Order, I know we don't use that specifically, but usually, to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds vote. However, no rule projecting, protecting a minority of any size can be suspended in the face of a negative vote as large as a minority, minority protected by the rule, by the rule. So, Robert's Rule tends to suggest that a motion to suspend a rule cannot have a lower threshold for adoption than the rule it is intended to suspend. A rule that requires three-quarters for adoption can only be suspended by an affirmative for equal to or greater than three-quarters. What's your thoughts about that?
You did share that, and I shared my opinion, which was, you could move to suspended rules, which would only require two-thirds vote. I think you also contacted Professor Dell, and he agreed with my interpretation, but certainly, that is for the council.
That is for the council. What does that mean?
I mean, the council, as always, is free to disregard my advice. However, it's my opinion that you can suspend the rules, which only requires two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. McDonald, did Professor Flinman Dell speak to this issue, that its request to suspend the rule was allowable and acceptable? Did he have an opinion on that, ma'am?
I shared with Professor Dell my opinion, which I said to the council earlier this week, and his response was that he thought that was a reasonable interpretation, not that I didn't read that.
And then, didn't other council members have the opportunity to contact Mr. Bell directly themselves with a similar question, and was his answer consistent through our city attorney, as that he thought it was acceptable?
That, that was what he responded to.
What does his capacity as it relates to the act of government or his job in chapel?
He's a faculty member with the School of Government and has actually published what is called the Suggested Rules of Procedure for a City Council, so it really kind of modifies Robert's Rules of Order to make it, I guess, easier for small groups such as city councils.
And have we adopted that?
Yes.
So, we've adopted his book as our policy, which kind of supersedes Robert's Rules of Order, so it would be fair to say that he is in fact a subject matter expert on that?
We certainly, in local government, consider him to be an expert as it pertains to parliamentary procedure.
Ms. McDonald, as a point of order, as a point of order, is there a provision that requires them to be?
I have the opportunity to ask questions, but you've already spoken and turned that up. It's Mr. Crisp.
I have a point of order.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Everyone has to have the opportunity to have a first round before we do.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Notwithstanding two-thirds, how many actual votes do we need to suspend the rules?
Seven.
Seven.
Mr. Bates? I didn't put it in my, I didn't think it was. Okay. Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. McDonald, let me understand this just for myself, maybe for something in the future. If my opportunity comes on an item that comes for a council, and it's something that didn't turn out exactly the way that I thought that vote may, you know, should have turned out as far as the way I wanted it to, you mean that I have the option, as has been done here tonight, to get some vote, some council members, at least three together, either the mayor, pro temp, or a council member, and request a motion of, to suspend the city code on a particular item, to relook at it, and take it from a super majority down to a two-thirds majority? Do I have that right with any item?
Two council members, if the mayor, the mayor pro temp, or two council members can call for a special meeting, and certainly, you could either at a regular meeting, request reconsideration of an item, or request that the rules be suspended.
So, so, a little bit more specific. So, if, if there's an item that did not turn out the way I wanted it to turn out, I have the option to do just what you just stated? I have that, that right to do?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the first round? Okay, Ms. Applewhite, second round?
I might do that. I'm sorry. I just had a quick question for, for the city attorney. This has happened several times before. Can we speak to when the chair, how, how the chair of this board is allowed to communicate? I read in our ordinance, 2.2.3, I believe, that when the chair of the board engages in debate, that they turn the gavel over to someone else? Is that in our ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So, I hope that we can adhere to that tonight, that when the chair of the board enters into debate, that they turn it over to someone else before they proceed, just as appointed board.
We would absolutely do that, but nowhere in our ordinance does it say that the chairman is not able to ask questions.
Thank you. Would you turn the gavel over?
When I ask questions, I think I'm in the right to do that unless you're counseling. That would indicate that I haven't. Any other second? Okay. Then the motion on the floor is to suspend the city code, section 2.3D, regarding reconsideration of the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million parks and recreation bonds, setting the public hearing, the related matters. Let me ask you a vote on that motion, please. Mr. Bates?
My mic, will you?
I did, yes, sir. Okay, sir. That motion carries with a total of seven, goes in favor of Mr. Bates, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shavani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler, in opposition, Mr. Crisp, Ms. Applewhite and Mr. Hare. We'll now move to item 5.2, which concerns a resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million parks and recreation bond, setting the public hearing thereon and other related matters. Item 5.2. Ms. Davy?
I'd like to make the motion for, to introduce the resolution for the bond order authorizing $45 million in the parks and recreation bonds, setting the public hearing thereafter and other related matters.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Massey. I have a motion and appropriate second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion. I've always felt that the, the package of consideration is too large, and I've been pretty vocal about that, so I would, I would move to approve the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $35 million for the parks and recreation bonds, setting the public hearing thereon and other related matters.
All right, we have a substitute motion and an appropriate second. Okay, I think we've got a valid substitute, so an appropriate second. Let's hear from staff on two issues, if we could. Someone can step up. First off, the required legal wording, why the motion is so complex? And then, secondly, for the substitute motion to be valid or passed by council, how would we reduce the current $45 million bond package to $35 million?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to ask the city clerk to go ahead and pass out a revised post-bond order for $35 million. And as part of that process, I'd like to ask the city clerk to acknowledge that she's received a sworn statement of debt that has also been revised for $45 million. Madam Clerk, have you received that? And the complexity of the bond order, there was a question from council member about that. This bond order is, is written by bond counsel. It has a number of steps in it, one of those being the action that I just took, which is asking the city clerk whether she has received a sworn statement of debt. And that was all part of this statutory process to make sure that the public has fair notice and appropriate notice about the issue that's going to become before council at the public hearing that's being set by this action. So, as you can take a look at the bond order, there's a number of steps, one of those being making sure that adequate information is provided regarding the city debt, the debt, the amount of debt, and when the public hearing will be held. So, that is why the motion that is oddly worded, as we provide to the council. Now, go to the second issue regarding the changes in the projects that is anticipated in order to both reduce the geo-debt request to, up to a maximum of $35 million, and reduce the estimated tax to below two cents. What we've proposed here in order to meet those constraints is to remove the field house from the multipurpose aquatic facility. That's about 58,000 square feet. And also to reduce some of the community space in that building as well, to take the entire structure from what was proposed to be 144,000 square feet to 72,000 square feet at an estimated cost of just under $16 million. Now, also, as part of that process, in order to make, to fit those two constraints, we would need to delay some other projects by approximately one year in order to allow some funding to accrue in a debt repayment time. So, those are the changes that would be made to the package in order to meet those constraints. Should council move forward on that motion?
Thank you, sir. I'm sure we'll have some more questions here, so if you might want to stay there. I think we begin with Mr. Bates?
Thank you, sir. We're still with the $35 million. Are we still planning on putting a $9.7 million cash money upfront or into the pot? So, it's still $45 million? I mean, I know we're only going to borrow $35, but still putting $300,000 short of $10 million cash into the pot brings it up to $45.
We would still use what we call a Pago, or cash payments, to pay for an additional, just under $10 million. So, total expenditures would be the original amount reduced by 10 million, about $40, $40 million.
I think. Ms. Applewhite?
Mr. Bauer, the decision to remove the field house. I know when we started this effort, we said that this whole thing was about our children and schools. I think school more than a great last came out. Currently, in Cumberland County, there's limited track facilities. I think if anything, this whole package would be worth salvaging, would be the field house, because currently in our Cumberland County schools, I think all of the kids get on a bus and they travel to one or two schools for, for practice. I'm not sure which one it is. So, with that consideration, how did you or whomever decide that the field house that would have the greatest impact for schoolchildren be the one that would be fucked out of us?
Staff was asked to look at different alternatives to reduce the package by $10 million. And we went through the package based on feedback from the community and master planning process, and did our best to identify the project that would have the least overall impact on the community, to make sure that we were building those assets that were closest to, the most accessible to, to the most in the public.
Can I ask the staff know that there's like no track facilities in Cumberland County?
Well, I know that, and Mr. Gibson, who actually coaches track as well there, that, and was intimately involved in this process.
So, we know that there's many track facilities, but we decided to pull back one thing that were the short, really short of. That, that's what we decided. So, when this goes back, I would assume if this passes, we're going to go to a public hearing. And I know we had 30 or 40 community meetings, I don't know how many. So, when you've already spoken to all of these people at the meeting, I think a good bit of them probably were attracted by the field house. What do you do with that now, before a public hearing? You kind of sold something that's not in the package. Are we ready to put this out without re-engaging the community and having a public hearing before we can re-engage them?
I'm not sure that's a question that's appropriately directed to me, council member. We certainly would do our best to correct information to the public should council support a different package after this has been passed.
Should I direct you to? Madam, Mr. Voorhees, do you know? How do we re-engage the citizens? I guess we've done 30, 40 community meetings. We briefed them that this field house is an integral part, and we're going to have everybody competing here in track and field, and now we're going to pull it out, pull it out, and we're going to proceed immediately to a public hearing. How do you re-engage all of those citizens you briefed, or does it matter?
Well, council member, you know what? This is kind of a dynamic process at this point. I think you raise a good point, and the staff will do its best to educate the community about the package that is approved, should one be approved. There'll be a public hearing coming up. There'll be an opportunity there to brief the public. I'm sure that this will be widely covered in media. We'll adjust whatever educational materials we have to reflect whatever package the city council approves.
Between now and December 3?
We'll do our best.
You're great. Thank you.
Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Bauer. About seven minutes ago, a motion was made to amend the original motion to $35 million, and when that motion was seconded, then you passed this piece of paper which says that it had, had been distributed to each council member. You obviously had advanced knowledge of this, the substitute motion, if you were able to prepare this paper. If you had that information, which is a significant change, why didn't I get that information from earlier than giving it to me now?
Because the motion had not been made, sir. As soon as the motion was made and we knew, we certainly were given a heads-up that it might be made, it might be seconded, and in preparation for that, we prepared the material. Should the motion be made, to be able to respond provides you updated information.
Now, the other question I have, I see nothing in here addressing the payback, in other words, the tax rate for citizens. How do we reconcile that?
Well, actually, as you said from the very beginning, sir, when we started talking about this over a year ago, the process of getting in front of the voters does not require any disclosure of what a potential tax rate is. The council member has asked us to do that, so as part of our educational process, we have done so. But the only thing that's required to go before the public is the limitation on the amount of debt that can be incurred, the $35 million.
Yes, sir. And so, in the mind of the citizen, we have planted the seed that we're talking about $2.25. What if this passes and the bond rate is 7%? Then you expect me to upgrade the tax on the citizen, right?
I don't need that. Thank you so much, Mr. Bates. Hi, sir. Mr. Bauer?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bauer, the only thing I see right now in this is the, is the timing of the public hearing. Is there anything, what would be the step for setting when the actual referendum was heard? What's the step on that?
Well, actually, should council move forward after the public hearing, take, take an action. As part of that action, there'll also be a resolution that's calling for the special action, and that'll be part of that action on December 3.
Okay, so the, the setting of the time for the resolution would be done at the following meeting, following public hearing?
That's correct.
I want to make sure it's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bauer, when you were before us at the last meeting, and you said, well, the financial director had come forward, and she had given us the additional cost that would be added on, I don't know if you call that the true cost or not, but with the $35 mil, with the interest rate, what are we looking at for that particular cost? Do you have that number? Maybe so the taxpayers would like to hear that.
No, sir, I cannot have that information. And it would be less than, of course, it was quoted before.
It would be less than 79 to 83 million, but it would be higher.
Correct, and she had that information in front of you, memorandum that was provided by the finance director this evening at the request of council. So, that's based on the $45 million. I wish to get you updated information, should this pass.
But it would be higher than the $35 million.
If you, if you lower than that, provided on the $45 million?
No, on the $35, the $35 mil, whatever the tax rate and, and interest rate, I mean, on, on the $35 million, it will be higher than the $35 million.
Well, of course, you're going to pay interest on, on whatever debt you incur, sir.
And that was the cost I was, I was requesting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the first? Anybody else on the first round? Okay, Ms. Applewhite, round the second.
This is my last one, but I, I can't move off of what council member Chris, his point that he made. And I didn't get it until you said it, sir. So I appreciate that. There appeared to be a very spontaneous second or substitute motion, appeared to be very spontaneous. But this is magically printed up and ready for us. So this leads me to believe that it's not spontaneous, it's well orchestrated. So I am asking you, and I am asking the city manager, when was this discussed? How did you know to print this up? How did you know this? How did you know it matched what pro temp said?
We were asked to put together options for lowering the bond issue after it failed at the last meeting.
Who asked you?
The mayor.
Did you ever share that or call a special meeting to involve the rest of the council? Or was it just the mayor and you and the pro temp and the city manager? Who was in the meeting?
Well, actually, we worked directly with the city manager, Mr. Voorhees, on putting together options to respond to that request from the council member, just as we provide information to other council members when they request it.
So you already knew the pro temp was going to say this? You already knew that?
I knew that there was a risk that someone was going to make this motion.
So you just guessed it?
No, I knew that someone had asked that they, they might make this motion, so we prepared for it.
Mr. Bauer, come on now, seriously. You knew, hold on, mayor, please. I need to ask, I am asking, who was at the meeting when this 35 million specifically? When did you meet and who was at the meetings?
Mr. Bauer, you may sit down.
Yep.
Congress member Applewhite, if you'd like to address.
I will. Sir, sir. When you discussed options, I would assume that the mayor, on behalf of the council, asked you to discuss options. Is that correct?
Mayor asked us to look at 35 million versus a 45 million, and we prepared information.
When did he ask you to do that?
I'd have to go back and check my notes.
Yesterday?
Most definitely yesterday, that conversation did occur.
Okay, the earliest, yesterday. So yesterday, you knew 35 million and then, thank you, makes my point. This is not a coincidence. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Voorhees, did I tell you, I have a question for you, sir, this is, this kind of question. Did I share with you about a five-hour meeting that I was involved in Friday to discuss the bond package with various members of council?
I recall, mayor, you, you, you told me that you had had many hours of conversation with different council members. I didn't get into the details.
And did we articulate the fact that during those discussions, what had gotten asked for was a police substation in a district? What had gotten asked for was that the construction period for the facilities be changed? What had been asked for as a requirement with the, the fully funded disparity study for somewhere between a half million and a million dollars? You recall me telling you about the frustration of those five hours sitting there Friday trying to find consensus on council and how all of those expectations and requirements had been suggested to me?
I recall those kinds of comments, yes, sir.
Okay, everyone has had the opportunity to go first and second, and we have an appropriate motion on this. Right, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. Mr. Chris, go ahead here.
I'm, 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 this was a question that had a concern, and this bothers me tremendously. Mrs., Mrs. McDonald, here I come now. What happens if I, at this time, introduce a preemptive motion to table this and get a second for that?
You have a substitute on the, you have a motion and a substitute.
But there are preemptive motions, ma'am, and two of them are, one is adjournment, and the other is to table. And those motions take precedence over other motions that may be on the floor at that time.
You are correct, Mr. Chris. I was getting there, but you are correct.
And I move to table this motion for 35 million.
Second. Have a motion to table and appropriate second. Discussion of that motion? Chair, I'll come up to you, sir. Round different motion now.
Yeah, but it's kind of close to that same cost. It's only 35 million.
Do you want to speak to, let me set this question.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to speak to the motion that Mr. Chris made?
Well, correct me if I'm out of order, I, I'm pretty sure I will be, but that 35 million, when I was asking the question to Mr. Bauer, will you, whenever you start, if this passes and you start going back through the community, letting them know that we're from one cost now to another cost from the bond proposal, will you be telling them the 35 million, or you would be telling them but the full cost, along with the interest, that full cost, say, let's just say it's up to 50 million, I'm just throwing it out there? Will you be making that, those type presentations, or will you be making $35 million presentations as you give?
I'm sorry, I didn't know that the question was directed to me. I apologize.
Oh, I was, neither one of you, Mr. Bauer, he just a minute. Go see make the presentation to the next.
Sir, as we said last time, if someone asks us a question, specific question about our estimate for interest costs, if someone provided that information, that information we're trying to make sure everyone understands is what will be on the ballot. And what will be on the ballot is authorization of the 35 million dollars, and that would be, that would be what we provided.
Mr. Chris? Yeah. Here, discussion. Here's my point. I haven't had time to look at this and analyze it, but I make the point by entering the motion to table, because we haven't had time, other than Mr. Mayor and staff, to look at this and analyze it in some sense. Making that point, I now withdraw my motion to table.
Okay, sir, thank you. So we're back to the substitute motion. That would be a resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $35 million Parks and Recreation Bond, setting the public hearings thereon and other related matters. Let me ask you a vote on that motion, please. Sorry, sir.
I have a light up for a question.
I apologize. Start up again, sir, I apologize.
Actually, I think that, that was actually in, in response to the motion to table. But I would like to ask the council to consider, there's, there's been a lot of discussion, there's been a lot of discussion tonight, and there's been a lot of discussion over the last several months about this issue, and we still seem to be very deeply divided. And I think the, to just, to consider the fact that if we're this deeply divided on council, how deeply divided the community must be, and to, to weigh our decision on that for, for the good of the city and for long, for, for the long term. But that there are some issues that have been raised tonight that, that do value some, some thought, so just want to pass that out there.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're back to the substitute motion, resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $35 million Parks and Recreation Bond, setting the public hearing thereon and other related matters. Okay, that motion fails. Those in favor, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Chivani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, and Mr. Massey, in opposition, Mr. Chris, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hare, Mr. Fowler. Anything else, council? Motion to adjourn?
We're back to, in this, the man in this.
No.